You can't, you can't go on.
All meeting to order. Everybody take their seats. We're trying to get started on time and get everybody out of here in a reasonable hour tonight. Thank everybody for coming. At this time, I'll have Anita read the warrant, please.
To either of the constables of the town of Rutland in the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Naquadah Elementary School Auditorium, 285 Main Street, Rutland, Mass., 01543, in said Rutland on Thursday, the 17th day of November 2022, at 6:00 in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Anita. At this time, will everybody stand and will salute the flag to my right? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody that is voting tonight should have a quite little magical thing here that makes our lives a lot easier tonight. We will have a couple test runs of this. I believe there are some non-residents here, but normally we all sit in one area, which we designated to be in the far right corner, but we don't necessarily need to do that where we're not going to do a lot of counting tonight as a whole. So we're going to try this. The first question would be, are you ready to go? You're ready to go? All right, so does anybody think we're going to have plowable snow here in Rutland before December 10th? If so, hit yes. If no, hit, if no snow, hit the red one. If you're undecided, you can hit the yellow one. Well, if you're going to go to Florida, I just said Rutland, Louis, all right? Let's not be difficult. So all those who think it's going to snow before December 10th, hit green. All those that think it's not, 10, Louis doesn't care, hit yellow. So we should know exactly how many ballots are out relatively. We try to get close to that number. We give you a few minutes to make a decision and we kind of go from there. These things have worked very well in the past and fairly accurate and makes it easier so we can do a majority or two-thirds or supermajority and go from there. Have all ballot who choose to. If so, I declare the ballot box closed. So there's 63 total ballots tonight. Forty-seven of you think it's going to snow before December 10th. Sixteen of you say no, and then we got, where's my yellow?
Yellow.
Oh, Louis didn't hit yellow, but okay. All right, so let's, let's go with, we're going to do a second one. All that people think we're going to be out of here by 8:00, please hit yes. All those that think we're not going to be out of here by 8:00, then you can hit no, please. And then you got Louis is yellow. All those ballot who care to, I declare the ballot box closed. Twenty-seven of you said yes. Wow. Thirty-seven of you said no. I hope you're wrong, but we're going to go from there. Is there any questions that are going to come up? If you choose to make a comment or anything, you're going to come to the podium directly in front of us. You have to state your name and address and go from there. You have to be a resident to communicate unless given permission to talk on any issue from there. All right, so without further ado, we're going to get started. Everyone probably knows, but if not, to the right of myself is the Finance Committee. Chairman is sitting beside me with her team of helpers on the other side. To my left, we have the town clerk, town lawyer, town administrator, and then chairman of the Board of Selectmen is Carol with her team beside her. And then handy-dandy man at the end is the guy that keeps us all looking good on camera. So I thank everybody for being here tonight and we're going to move on. Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of 5% or $42,183 of certified free cash to the town's stabilization fund.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance Committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your button. Green for yes, red for no. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-three yeses, three nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of 11.85%, or $100,000 certified free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please use your buttons. Hit green for yes, no for red, please. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-two yeses, four nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of 5% of certified free cash to the town's OPEB trust fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of 5% of $42,183 of certified free cash to the town's other post-employment benefit trust fund.
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed will be the red buttons, please. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-six yeses, one no. Motion carries. Moving on to Article four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of $11,413 from certified free cash, transfer a sum of $2,789 from water and sewer retained earnings, and to transfer a sum of $15,557 from account number 001-122-5150-000 to the accounts as shown on the handout titled, "November 17, 2022, Special Town Meeting Article Number Four, for the purpose of funding step increases and minimum wage adjustments for non-union, non-contracted employees effective January 1, 2023, according to the non-union compensation wage metrics that has been scaled in response to the increase in minimum wage to $15 per hour as of January 1, 2023."
Second.
Motion has been made in second. I would assume everybody is okay that I didn't read the article before the motion was made. It's relatively the same thing. So motions made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Gary, would you like to make a comment?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a little definition or explanation to this article and why we are where we are. Effective January 1, 2023, the minimum wage is being increased to $15 per hour. Due to this increase, our current wage matrix must be updated. When the minimum wage was increased to $14.25 an hour on January 1, 2022, the additional steps of the matrix were not increased, only the entry step was adjusted and not the remaining. As the entry level step will now be increased, it is necessary to increase the remaining as entry level step one will now be greater than step two. As the norm for the OAD step increase is 4.25%, all steps will be adjusted to reflect that amount. Our OAD staff have not received step increases since fiscal year 20. We are now asking to realign the wages of the unaffiliated support staff so that all town employees are in sync as far as necessary wage adjustments go. We are all feeling the pain of current increases in all of our expenses over the last 12 months. Nationally, this has translated into an estimated 8.37% cost of living increase so far this calendar year. With the current FY23 matrix in place, it will not be feasible for our support staff to keep up with the current rate of inflation. This article attempts to correct that. The services that our support staff provide for us are extremely important as they are the front lines. They answer and/or direct calls from residents, contractors, as well as fellow employees and other agencies. They also must receive training on new and necessary programs such as viewpoint, radar, and other IT-related items. This article, as Carol has mentioned, transfers $15,557 from a line item for the current fiscal year that was put in to help with this process. And we are asking to supplement that with $11,413 from free cash and $2,789 from water sewer retained earnings to accomplish this. I thank the BOS for their support. I thank the FinCom for their support and favorable recommendation, and you, the residents, for your continued support. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. All those, there's 66 in favors, three nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds a sum of money for the purchase of 11 bulletproof vests for the police department or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $9,845 from certified free cash for the purpose of purchasing 11 bulletproof vests for the police department.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion receives support. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-eight yeses, two nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from water and sewer-related earnings, water and sewer-free cash, a sum of money including all costs for survey, design, and any other cost incidentals and related thereto of a new sewer force main in Miles Road or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $110,000 from water sewer retained earnings, including all costs for survey, design, and cost incidental and related thereto for the new sewer-water force main.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion receives support. Recommendation of Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-four, sixty-five yeses and seven nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money to be added to the appropriation made for snow and ice to defray the costs to be incurred performing snow plowing or unimproved private gravel roads in Rutland as previously approved and documented on a list held by the Department of Public Works for the 2022-2023 winter season or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $12,000 from certified, $12,000 cash from certified free cash to be added to the appropriation for snow and ice to defray costs to be incurred performing snow plowing on unimproved private gravel roads in Rutland as previously approved and as shown on the handout entitled, "Designated Private Ways for Snow and Ice Removal for the 2223 Winter Season."
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-one yeses, eight nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money for the purpose of purchasing a new snowplow assembly or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $9,850 from certified free cash for the purpose of purchasing a new snowplow assembly.
Motion receives support?
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-three yeses, five nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article nine, to see if the town will appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money for legal review of the proposal by law amendment as approved on Article Number 18 of the November 12, 2020 Special Town Meeting, as may be necessary or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $2,000 from certified free cash for legal review of the proposed by law amendments as approved by Article Number 18 of the November 12, 2020 Special Town Meeting, as may be necessary.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by your green button. All those opposed All those voted who wish, if so, I declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-six yeses, sixteen nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds free cash, a sum of money to the account number 001-220-5200-000, fire purchase service or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $17,905.17 from certified free cash to account number 001-220-5200-000, fire purchase services for the purpose of funding necessary equipment repairs.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? We are a great, quiet group tonight. That's off to a good sign, folks. All those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Eighty yeses, three nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money for the purchase of 100 chairs for the large meeting area in the library or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $9,897.17 from certified cash for the purpose of purchasing 100 chairs for the large meeting room in the library.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, if so, I declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-one yeses, sixteen nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money for the purchase of a color printer for resident and staff use at the library or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $997 from certified free cash for the purchase of purchasing a color printer for resident and staff use at the library.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I just have one question. Karim Puleyatko, if the residents use this, will there be a charge?
For the residents' use of a printer?
Yes, which has 10 cents for black and white and 20 cents for colored.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Jean Grant, Tusekamore Drive, I just want to remind folks that this printer is really not working. It prints very horrible copies. And even though we do charge residents to use it, it is a heavily used printer. And I do recommend that people say yes on getting a new printer in our library. Thank you.
Is there? I realize, I guess I shouldn't have said anything about people talking here earlier, but I didn't think a printer would be a big deal.
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive, will the cost that's charged to the residents be put into a fund for maintenance for said printer or for future purchases?
The head has been shaped, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Goes into the general fund. Is the general fund of the library?
No.
Okay.
Goes back to the town, so it's not really a separate account, for clarification, I believe. Correct? Is there any other discussion on a printer? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. We will, all those in favor of this article, please use your green button. All those opposed, All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-five yeses, six nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 13, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money to replace of the one failed heater in the DPW garage or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $15,000 from certified free cash for the purpose of replacing one failed heater in the DPW garage.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, Lou Carnicoli, 18 Blueberry Lane, I read in this, first of all, who did this beautiful summary thing here? Who's responsible for this?
I believe your favorite employee.
She is. Oh, hopefully our next town administrator, but that's another discussion for another day. And the write-up here, it says two of them have failed, but we're only replacing one. It's $15,000, so I would assume if we replaced two, it'd be $30,000. Why are we replacing both of them? Makes no sense to me. Two are down, we're only replacing one. Doesn't make any sense.
We can certainly, Mr. Buckley, can you certainly address that, please?
I'd like to, yeah. It's more for the folks at home that can hear this. You look good on camera, too, Mr. Buckley.
Those who don't know me, I'm Joe Buckley, Director of Public Works. We were hoping to get a grant to replace the entire heating system in Public Works next spring. We decided to go with replacing one so that the folks who work in the garage will be warm throughout the winter instead of spending all the money at once. So if we get a grant, we'll cover all of the heat. So we wanted to make an interim investment, but thank you. I hope that answers your question.
But they'll be warm?
They'll be warm to work, yes.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of this article, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-nine yeses, two nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 14, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money to recover DPW funds used to pay for cutting dangerous trees along the road or take any action in relation thereto. I think we're okay.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $15,000 from certified free cash for the purpose of supplementing the amount appropriated for the DPW for FY2023 as DPW funds were used to pay for cutting, to pay for the cutting of dangerous trees along town roads.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are eighty-nine yeses, there are three nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds, a sum of money to hire a professional to make recommendations on handicap accessibility at the community center and make necessary upgrades as identified or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $7,000 from certified free cash for the purpose of hiring professional, a professional to make recommendations on handicap accessibility at the community center and make necessary upgrades as identified.
Second.
Motion made in second. Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are seventy-eight yeses, eleven nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from available funds free cash, a sum of money to complete necessary repairs to three chimneys at the Wood House Building. Building or make other masonry repairs as needed or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer fifty thousand dollars from certified cash for the purpose of repairing, replacing or demolition of any of the three chimneys at the Woodhouse Building or make masonry repairs as needed, including foundation and other stonework in the building, all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? This lady had her hand up first, please. You can proceed that way.
Hi, good evening. Tan Tran, new to town, so I have a point of clarification.
You need to state your name and address, please.
Tan Tran, at One Teresa Drive, new to town. Point of clarification, I don't know where the Woodhouse is and what's that Woodhouse. Is that a historical site here?
The Woodhouse is to the right of the fire station. It is the home of the Historical Society.
Okay, that's the ranch.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sheila Jutkins, Seventy-Six Wheeler Road, also President of the Rutland Historical Society. Dear residents and voters of Rutland, on behalf of the Rutland Historical Society, I'm here to express the importance of preserving and completing the necessary repairs to the three chimneys and other masonry repairs to the Woodhouse Building before any other further roof repairs can be made. As you know, Rutland is a town full of rich history in which the Rutland Historical Society has been committed to preserving for our present and future generations. The Rutland Historical Society was formed in the late eighteen hundreds and was reestablished in nineteen sixty-five. I'm proud to be the granddaughter of two of the Historical Society's founders, my grandparents, Harold I. Jutkins, also known as Judd, and my grandmother, Charley E. Wheeler, from generational family of Rutland, as well as Frida and Ed Kelsey, who were concerned about the future of Rutland's historic buildings and properties. The Woodhouse, located at two thirty-two Main Street, where the Rutland Historical Society's museum and library resides, has over one million dollars worth of valuable artifacts dating back to the seventeen hundreds. In two thousand and eighteen, the Rutland Historical Society was requested by the Select Board to hire an antique appraiser to assess the value of the collection. Since two thousand and eighteen, Rutland Historical Society has received many valuable family heirlooms and historic artifacts from local and distant family members, thus increasing the value of the collection today. The Rutland Historical Society Executive Board, Rutland Historical Society members, and friends of the Rutland Historical Society are greatly concerned about the necessary repairs needed to the Woodhouse Building and ask the voters to consider preserving the Woodhouse. The Woodhouse was donated to the town from Hazel Hamth Wood, another generational family of Rutland, and Hazel was the wife of Rutland's famous and prestigious artist Franklin T. Wood. The Rutland Historical Society is vital to the town and is an important asset which enhances the quality of life to the Rutland community and to the communities both educationally and culturally. We hope you consider our request to vote for repairing and preserving the Woodhouse Building. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-two yeses, eighteen noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article seventeen to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article Nine dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for the replacement of a pool house doors or take any action in relation there, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, bad dream. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and reallocate six thousand dollars from Article Number Nine of the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Special Town Meeting for the replacement of the pool house doors, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those who wish, please use your green buttons for yes. All those opposed, please use your red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-six yeses, six noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article eighteen to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article Nine Pool House Sewer Line dated November nineteenth, eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one to purchase supplies for the installation of drainage to prevent flooding in the pool house building or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and reallocate sixteen thousand dollars from Article Number Nine of the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Special Town Meeting to purchase supplies for the installation of drainage to prevent flooding in the pool house building.
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons for yes. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-one yeses, seven noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article nineteen to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from the Article Twelve Library Heater AC Unit dated November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for updates and repairs to the two primary doors at the library or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and reallocate five thousand dollars from Article Number Twelve Library Heater AC Units of the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Special Town Meeting for updates and repairs to the two primary doors at the library, including all incidental and related expenses.
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the box closed. Eighty-five yeses, seven noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty to see if the town will vote to reallocate funds from Article Twelve Heater, Library Heater and AC Unit dated on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for landscape updates at the library or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and reallocate ten thousand dollars from Article Number Twelve Library Heater slash Air Conditioning Unit from the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one Special Town Meeting for landscaping updates at the library, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. Just a clarification on the explanation where it's stating that the one remaining original heater unit can be evaluated. Was that originally part of the original article that it was supposed to be replaced and it's no longer the case that's being put on hold to reallocate these funds for
Mr. Buckley, can you address that, please?
Did you hear a question, Mr. Buckley? As you walk back here, she'll repeat it kindly.
In the explanation where it's stating that the one remaining original heater unit can be evaluated, was that part of the heater that, for the original Article Number Twelve, where we approved the funding to replace? Is that being put on hold?
No. The original article was ninety thousand dollars. We, the library is serviced by five heating air conditioning units. There are two in the basement, there are three on the roof. The original article called for the replacement of the three on the roof. That work is done. We got a very favorable bid price. It came in at sixty-five thousand. So we wanted this, after we fixed the landscaping, which is what this article is intended to do, and after we fixed the doors, we still have a little bit of money left, we decided that it would be in our best interest to have all of the units serviced and that particular remaining unit evaluated, but there's no trouble with it at all. Does that answer your question?
Yes. So the original, original article replaced all of the units on the roof, which is what it was intended for.
Yes, it's all done.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-seven yeses, seven noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-one to see if the town will vote to amend the revolving fund general bylaw according to the document on file with the town clerk's office or take any action in relation there, too.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the revolving funds general bylaw according to the documents on file with the town clerk's office and shown on the handout entitled revolving funds.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-five yeses, fifteen noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-two to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectman to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the property located at three oh seven Main Street, Rutland, identified by the select assessors as partial thirty C dash two and classify it under divisions of GL sixty-one A, which property is subject to the town's right of first refusal for general municipal purposes and/or such terms and conditions as the select board seems appropriate, and raise and appropriate transfer available funds and/or borrow a sum of money for the purpose of funding said acquisition and the costs incidental or related thereto and to meet this appropriation to authorize the treasurer the approval of the select board to borrow all or a portion said sum under GL Chapter Forty-four, Section S, Section Seven or Eight and/or any other enabling authorities and the issue of bonds or notes of the town and to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instructions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing acquisition or take any actions thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take no action on Article Number Twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends no action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Please, Blair, I just want to, what does it mean, we vote no or yes? We take no action. We vote no or we vote yes?
You vote yes to take no action. So yes would be agree with the motion that's currently made. Do you understand?
I do know.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-two yeses, twelve noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article twenty-five to see if the town will vote to approve the dedication...
Twenty-three. Twenty-three. That was twenty-two.
Twenty-three. I guess I flipped it to the wrong side. I do apologize. To see if the town will vote to accept, this is Article twenty-three, folks, to see if the town will vote to accept as a public way of the roadways known as Sedoma Circle from SA zero plus zero plus zero to STA five plus seven four dash zero three and a portion of Woodside Ave from STA thirty-five plus fifty point zero zero to STA fifty plus twenty-four point twelve as therefore laid out by the select board and shown on a plan of land entitled Road as Built Plans Bryce Estates Phase One dated October seventh, two thousand and twenty and the revised March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one preparation by New England Environmental Design Incorporated and on file with the town clerk and authorized by the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easement in Sedoma Circle and said portion of Woodside Ave for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Rutland and any drainage, utility, and/or other easement related thereto or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as public ways the roadways shown as Sedona Circle from Station Zero Plus Zero Zero to Station Five Plus Seventy-Four Point Zero Three and a portion of Woodside Avenue from Station Thirty-Five Plus Fifty Point Zero to Station Fifty Plus Twenty-Four Point Twelve as Pier Two Four laid out by the select board and shown on a plan of land entitled Road as Built Plans Bryce Estates Phase One dated October seventh, two thousand and twenty and revised March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one prepared by New England Environmental Design, Inc., on file with the town clerk and as shown in the handout, and authorized the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fees to and/or easements in Sedona Circle and said portion of Woodside Avenue for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Rutland and any drainage, utility, and/or other easements related thereto.
Second.
Motion made in second recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? On your paperwork in front of you, it says two-thirds of it. It is not necessary to be two-thirds per town council. It only needs to be majority.
Just, just a point, Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, just a point of clarification. I believe that is called Bryce Lemon Estates, and your article says Bryce Estates. Now, I don't know whether it makes any difference or not, I just don't want it to become a legal sticking point later.
It is referred to as Bryce Lemon, sir.
The plan as originally supplied was Bryce Estates. The entire project was expanded to include Lemon. So the plan as put forth is Bryce Estates for that portion of the road.
Rachel Dolan, Ware Road. Just as a point of clarification, subdivision regulations, I believe, planning board is done in phases. done in phases and this particular phase has been signed off by Planning Board, DPW, and everything has been inspected and up to specs. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly since there seemed to be an issue at the last town meeting that because the entire subdivision was not completed and many people voted no on some road acceptances. So, I just want a clarification that this phase is completed and signed off by all department heads that are necessary in the town.
I'm going to ask Mr. Blair to speak on behalf of that. He's the developer with this.
Cleveland, I've made Harry to chill drive, but I'm the developer here. Yes, to answer your question, all has been signed off and it has to be built in phases. So, the planning board signed off, the DPW signed off, the selectmen signed off, finance committee recommends it, so really should be yes because people, the residents of the town, they're paying real estate taxes. They really should get plowing and sanding and so forth and maintenance on their streets. They should be made public.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, and again, this is just majority, please vote yes. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those voted who wish? I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty-two yeses, eighteen noes. Motion carries. Article 24. If there's no objection, the motion is very similar to the article and I'm going to ask the reader to read the motion if you don't mind, please.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as public ways the roadways known as Oakley Drive from Station 0+00 to Station 2+60 and a portion of Woodside Avenue from Station 28+25 to Station 35+89.12 as here to forelaid out by the select board and shown on a plan of land entitled Road as Built Bryce Estates Phase 2 dated December 20, 2021 prepared by New England Environmental Design, Inc., on file with the town clerk and as shown in the handout and authorized the select board to acquire by gift, purchase, and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or easements in Oakley Drive and said portion of Woodside Avenue for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Rutland and any drainage, utility, and/or easements related thereto.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish? I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty yeses, seventeen noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 25 now, to see if the town will vote to approve the dedication of the intersection of Glenwood Road and Campbell Street as the Fred and Shirley Warren Square or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the dedication of the intersection of Glenwood Road and Campbell Street as Fred and Shirley Warren Square as shown on handout entitled Proposed Plan for Dedication.
Does this, motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee took no action on this article.
Is there a discussion on this article?
Mr. Moderator, Lou Carnacurly, 18 Blueberry Lane. The town has in the past dedicated a couple of areas as squares for citizens. The one at the top of Prescott Street for Mr. Brooks and down here on Pleasantale for former police chief, now retired, Ralph Anderson. So, I came up with this idea that there is a, and if you look in the handout that Tamika did a fabulous job with, to the page that shows what we are proposing, you will see that the present intersection is rather shabby, overgrown. The town has taken down that tree, but it really is not very presentable. I took a picture of a similar type square or triangular up in Wells, Maine. This will give you some idea what this will look like when we're done with this project. There'll be a flagpole flying the American flag. It'll have a light that'll be powered by solar, so there'll be a light on it at night. There'll be a monument similar to the one for Mr. Brooks in front and with a pole with the sign atop saying the Warren Square. Now, who are Fred and Shirley Warren? Well, if you've been in Rutland for a number of years, you know who they are. They had 188 acre farm. They were, they farmed that land. As you all know, Rutland is a farm community. I was serving on the Board of Selectmen when a group of citizens came before us. I believe the chief spokesperson for that group was your late wife, wasn't it? Am I correct on that, Selectmen? Thank you. And asked that we recognize Rutland as a farm community and we are recognized as a farm community. Mr. Warren taught agriculture for many, many years at Wachusett. I had the honor of being one of his colleagues when I was a teacher down at Wachusett. Some of you probably still shudder over the fact that your kids had me in class, but they turned out all right, I think. Fred was a terrific teacher. I know our moderator went through his course. So, it's a farm community with a person, people who are involved in farming. Shirley was just, I guess the best way to describe Shirley Warren was using one simple word, lady. She was a lady. She was a terrific human being. They were definite, definite great supporter of our community. So, I ask that you support this tonight and it's not going to cost the town any money. It's all funded privately by the Warren family. The maintenance of this property will be maintained privately, so it's not going to cost the town any money to cut the grass. And I'm 80 years old. I plan to live to be 100, so I know for the next 20 years, I will personally cut the grass, so we don't have to worry. I ask for your support. It's a tribute to a couple of great people. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? We got one over here.
Nancy Spencer, 313 Main Street. Just a quick question. I believe there is a Native American grinding stone on that square. What are they going to do with that? I mean, it's fine.
I know what you're talking about. That stone was placed there by Addison Redfield. So, there was a, there was a person living in the area that would like to have that. If you believe it should stay there, I guess we could...
I just believe, I just didn't know where it came from and like...
Addison Redfield found it in his field and he placed it there years ago.
I didn't know it was a town thing that should go up in the, you know, town.
No, no. It was Addison, Addison used to live there. But we have, there was a citizen that lived proximally to that and he has requested, shown interest.
All right, thank you.
No, it's not, it's not going to get thrown away. You're welcome.
Mr. Moderator, from the finance committee, even though it says here no action, we are in favor of this, but where it was presented to us at no cost to the town and no, no money involved, we thought it should be up to the body to decide favorably on this. So, we are in favor of it.
Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. We're voting right now, so you can... All those vote, all those voted who wish? I declare the ballot box closed. Seventy-six yeses, nineteen noes. Motion carries. I'm going to allow Mr. Canaccio to speak for a moment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I was remiss in saying, and I want to publicly thank the Board of Selectmen for working with me on this issue. I appreciate their support and I also want a big, a big shout out hello to Tamika, Tamika over there. Who, believe me, I can be crazy at times and during the process, I was a little crazy, but she calmed me down and we got this thing, so I want to thank you publicly. You're a terrific, terrific person. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Article 26, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding to the Article 3 Use Regulations, Section 10A.C.2 Special Permit Used in Village Center District Non-Residential Use, a new principal category H, automotive sales and repair and motorcycle sales and repair as set forth in handout entitled November 17, 2022, Special Town Meeting, Zoning Bylaw Village Use, Article 26, also on file with the town clerk or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by adding to Article 3 Use Regulations 10A.C.2 Special Permit Uses in Village Center Districts Non-Residential Uses, a new principal category H, Automobile Sales and Repair and Motorcycle Sales and Repair as set forth in the handout entitled November 17, 2022, Special Town Meeting. Zoning Bylaw Village Center Uses, Article Number 26, also on file with the town clerk.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Planning Board Recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. Two questions. What is the traffic impact of this and what is perhaps cost to our town as far as keeping things clean, making sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, et cetera, et cetera?
Planning Board, can you answer this for us? No, no, publicly?
What might the traffic impact be, especially in that area? And what about cost to the town as far as maintaining, making sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, that the frontage looks decent, et cetera?
I guess a couple of things. Number one, in this proposal, this additional use is allowed only by special permit, which, and there have been, I'm going a little bit off of your comment here, there's in the past been some concern about locating businesses such as this. The reason we put it under special permit allowed only is because, you know, within this village center district, there are neighborhoods. The whole area is not uniform. So, in some places, this particular use, automobile repair, would be very, very reasonable. In other places, it may just wouldn't fit with the character of that particular neighborhood. Having this requiring a special permit allows the Planning Board to make that determination to say, well, okay, here, yeah, I mean, it's okay. Here, no, it's not. And as far as an additional cost to the town, I don't see that there really would be any, you know, in that respect, it's, you know, if not, an auto repair shop, you know, a different business, a restaurant or what, would probably, you know, yield the same cost in terms of cost of the town or traffic.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? I can't.
Is this, is this just a general thing or is it a specific business?
If you, just if you go to the...
No, no, the location, if it's a specific business.
The, the impetus for including this change was from a specific request for a business in the Four Corners area, which is one of our towns, town or village center districts. However, it just kind of came to our attention that this particular use is allowed in our town center districts and the town center districts and the village center district zones have similar allowances and similar restrictions. So, it really kind of just made sense to allow this change, to kind of keep it in line with some of our other specialized districts.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, this is two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish? I declare the ballot box closed. There are 98 total ballots cast, 76 yes, 22 noes. I was looking to a town council.
It does.
I would agree with you. So, all those, two-thirds passed? The article passes. It's two-thirds. I don't know what you were saying. Moving on to Article 27, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town, the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation for the purpose of formalizing the town's previous vote, create a five-member Board of Selectmen and to address related issues, all set forth as in a handout, and to authorize the General Court to make changes to form only to the bill unless authorized by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such revisions as may be within the public purpose of the petition or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for special legislation with the purpose of formalizing the town's previous vote to create a five-member Board of Selectmen and to address related issues and to authorize the General Court to make changes of form only to the bill unless authorized by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such revisions as may be within the public purpose of the petition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. We're back to majority vote on this one. All those voted who wish? I declare the ballot box closed. Eighty yeses, seven noes. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 28, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Rutland zoning bylaw by amending Article 12 Marijuana Establishment, Section 6, Section C, to allow the state licensed marijuana establishment, LME, to seek and to be granted a special permit under Article 12, Section 5 of the zoning bylaw for the concurrent, concurrent operation of up to two or more LMEs on the same parcel of land and for the purpose of concentrating cultivation and manufacturing activities on one parcel or take any action relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Rutland zoning bylaw by amending Article 12 Marijuana Establishment, Section 6C, to allow a state licensed marijuana establishment, LME, to seek and be granted a special permit under Article 12, Section 5 of the zoning bylaw for the concurrent operation of up to two or more LMEs on the same parcel of land for the purpose of concentrating cultivation and manufacturing activities on one parcel.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee took no action on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Mr. Blair, would you? Mr. Blair, would you please be the first?
Clee Blair, from 8 Heritage Hill Drive. Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the article as follows. It's three parts. Part one, we'll be changing Article 12 Marijuana Establishment Subsection 6 to Article 12 Marijuana Establishment Subsection 87. Part two, we will be changing the word multiple in the sentence. A license may be granted a special permit for the concurrent operation of multiple LMEs. We need to add the word "two," T-W-O. It will then read, "A license may be granted a special permit for the concurrent operation of two LMEs." Part three, we'll be changing the end of the sentence, "License cultivation and manufacturing operations on one parcel of land," to instead finish the word "only" in order to be more final and concise, "Cultivation and manufacturing operations only."
Does this amendment receive support?
Seconded.
An amendment has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Is there any discussion?
Can I speak if I'm not voted?
Unless I grant it, or someone asks you to. These are gentlemen who owns the facility.
Joe Becker, 18 Crestview. Can someone just put that in layman's terms for me?
I was going to ask the same thing. Clee, if you don't object, will you ask? I was going to ask him. Is that all right, Kev, or you want to do the same thing? Clee, you're asking nicely if he can talk, because he can, can you put that in English?
Yes, I can.
For us farmers?
Good evening, guys. I am a farmer as well. I identify as well. My name is Matthew Brody. I am the owner and founder of Mastery Holdings out of 79 Main Street. Thank you, Clee, our landlord. We have received a cultivation and manufacturing approval from the town in 2021 via host community agreement. However, a town bylaw does not allow us to have them both at the same address. What this means is we can grow the cannabis at the facility right now, but we can't process it. It means we can't have a kitchen for edibles, we can't make free rolls, anything like that. Essentially, what the way, the way the law is written currently is we would have to build a building all 20 feet away and transport it back and forth. It's a bit redundant, and I feel the Planning Board agree with us, and we hope the rest of the town can see that way also. Any other questions, though, please?
Does that answer your question? We're only working on the amendment at the moment. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Kevin, is that, do you choose to talk?
Not as long as you understand. Yeah, I would just make sure.
We're going to kind of stay on topic of the amendment.
On the amendment only. The amendment came before us just this past week, and the amendment was talked through and happened because the original request from the citizen's petition was copied kind of incorrectly to make this by a month ago. So the document was copied off of a cover page versus the secondary page in there. So the amendment really states what we originally looked at and agreed to, which allows two only LMEs, meaning there's a total of like nine, not to get too, but only two are allowed, not multiple, and that's why the amendment changed.
Thank you for the clarification. Is there any other discussion on the amendment?
Clee, Mr. Ross has asked a question. Is it stated on a piece of paper 86, and you said 87?
It's stated on, in the original motion, it says Marijuana Establishment, Section 6C, 6C, so that we changed the six to an 87.
You're 86.
No, it's 87.
It says 86 in here, though.
I know, I know it says 86 in there, but Anita corrected me at the beginning of the meeting. I said, "It's 87, not 86."
Okay. I'm a farmer, not a lawyer.
No, there was some discussion earlier there about just clarification, so that was discussed. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? So we're going to vote on the amendment, and the amendment will take two-thirds as well, correct? Town Council?
I'm sorry, what?
Two, two-thirds on the amendment, correct, as well?
Majority on the amendment.
Oh, majority on the amendment. So the amendment only needs majority. Everybody understands what Mr. Blair said, and the gentleman, that the farmer has made it simple for all of us. So we're going to vote on the amendment. Are you ready to do the amendment? So, green for yes, in support of the amendment, no is red, and it's only majority, please. And then we'll have discussion on the amendment, on the article with it. Does everybody, if it's favorable? Does everybody understand? And this is only majority on this particular article. All those voted who wish?
Just on the amendment. Just the amendment.
Right. All those voted who wish? I hesitate because the number's still going up, so if the number still is moving. Jeez, I've never seen this. Looks like bingo up here tonight, up here. Lights are flashing at me. All those who voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. There are 70 yes, 21 nos. Motion carries on the amendment.
Mr. Moderator.
Now, yes?
Were people given a handout on their way in today? Yes, so we want to reference, we want to make a friendly amendment to reference the handout.
You can't, because we draw them.
We can't, why?
Darren thinks the amendment, the handout...
With, because we didn't say that those other things were amending the handout. So I think we just need to make sure that it's the handout as amended.
So does everybody understand what the town council is saying? It was a handout, hey, I had an opportunity to get it back there, but that has been corrected with the amendment.
That's right.
See, as long as you understand that the handout that you have there has been amended with this new amendment, is that?
That's fine with me.
Simple? Okay. Is there any discussion on the article with the amendment?
Just a quick question. Maybe our farmer could explain why they're going to give us a ton of money, and a little bit more maybe about what this is all about.
Well, yeah, but that, I, stop. He doesn't need to answer that. That's not, that doesn't really matter to the article. Am I correct?
That is true.
So I, I don't...
Okay. It's sort of like on the library question, you know, is, do we really need doors? It's, I would like to understand what I'm voting on a little bit better. If I'm the only one, then that's fine, but...
Can you, can you help with that? I mean, I'll let him talk, but I just think we're going off the, a little bit...
Nick Monaco, police chief. So I just want to remind everybody, you're not voting on whether or not you approve of a marijuana establishment. These permits have already been granted. You're voting on whether you want to allow this licensee to operate out of one building or two buildings. Okay? So two different functions in one building. So from a police standpoint, two buildings provides a security issue, where you have high-value product moving from point A to point B. That's a concern for us. I would prefer to see the high-value product be cultivated and manufactured in the same building. Done deal. So that's a police opinion on that.
Is that, are you...
Darren Ross, 5% of Spartan Lane. Can we have the, through the chair, can the farmer guarantee us that he's going to give us all this money? He promised on the second page?
Yes, sir.
Not all farmers, just this farmer, right?
No, well, hold on, one second. I fully support this building, but if he's going to make statements like this, I'd like to get it in writing somehow through legal counsel.
We do, it's in our contract with the town. Our host community agreement is built on a 3% agreement with the town that all host residents pay that back to them. On top of it, it's more revenue.
And the 5% was in that contract? And the $5,000, excuse me?
We have $5,000 to the MRF Department, and then $5,000 to the fire department on completion of the plans. Once we have a main factory license, each borough will get $5,000 a year.
And that's in writing?
Yes, sir. We support it.
Mr. Moderator, Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, again.
I guess I have two points. Can, can we take a vote to allow him to speak? You know, as, as a group, as a body?
Usually it's my decision, and it comes from somebody else.
I don't want to step on your toes. All I'm saying is, you know, it's pretty important, and he's the guy with the facts, so...
But it's similar to the DPW, who doesn't live in town. We allow them to do it within reason.
And there were no objections.
Continue.
Thank you. So I guess after hearing the police chief suggesting that this is the right thing to do from a safety standpoint, and, and he supports it, I see no reason why, you know, he already has all the permits. All he's asking is, let's put it in one building. Police chief thinks that's a great idea. I'm not going to argue with the police chief, so I say, let's, let's support this.
Is there any?
Mr. Moderator, through you, Lauren Goldberg. I don't want to be an alarmist, but I do think it's important that people understand that the law and host community agreements did just change, and the town will have to document its, its costs in order to wind up being paid the full 3%. I think, again, I'm not suggesting that there's any ill will or that there isn't a plan to do that. It's just that the law has changed. And so in, in terms of the town's action, if the gentleman wound up saying, you know, "Hands up, I'm, I'm just going to do what I'm going to do," and I'm not suggesting that he is, it would be hard for us to enforce. So I do think that you need to know that. And before, the law wasn't as specific about demonstrating costs, and it's much more specific now. So the town's going to have to work on its end to make sure that those costs are being documented.
If I'm, I have a question for town council to that point. These permits though have, he, the, he's already received the, the host community agreement for two, so this is just, the amendment is just to put it on one, one parcel versus two separate, and having to incur the transportation costs?
Certainly, and that, that, Mr. Moderator, through you, exact, there's no, there's no question about what's being proposed. It's very limited. You've already approved having it at that location. There is nothing in the actual legislation that says that this is only a forward-looking rule. Apparently, that was the intent of the General Court, but the words aren't perfect. And again, I, I'm not suggesting that it's not a better idea to have one building, but I am just saying, you know, the, the, there could be ways to challenge an obligation under the agreement that we would have a hard time defending. So I'm just putting people on notice. Don't, you know, don't necessarily vote on this that way because of the money that the town may get. I know, not what he wants to hear for sure. Sorry.
Mr. Moderator, Lou Carnacchio again. So I'd like to ask the council this. You're saying that the law, state legislature or whatever, has changed things, so it's a little ambiguous, et cetera, but tonight, we're voting to go from two buildings to one.
100%.
So let's say our, our friend here and his landlord decide we're going to stick it to the town. We come to another town meeting, we reverse what we're doing tonight and say, "You cannot be in one building anymore, nor you have to go to two buildings, or you have to go to three buildings." So I doubt very much if this businessman slash farmer would do that to us, so I, I don't see a problem.
No.
I, I appreciate your, your concern for us, but we have control over this situation, the town does.
Mr. Moderator.
It's called town meetings, and it's called, it's called bylaw changes. I mean, article changes. Thank you.
A, an existing use that's legal when it starts is going to be a permitted use after that. It's going to be grandfathered by that action. Again, you've already voted. That's not why I was mentioning this, and I, I know it's not an easy thing to understand, but I would feel irresponsible not telling you that the law has changed. That's it.
Is there any discussion on this article with the amendment? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will now proceed to vote. This is a two-thirds vote with the amendment. All those in favor, are you ready? Oh, some people's already voted. Wow, you haven't been told to. All those in favor, use your green buttons. All those opposed, red buttons, please. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 95 total ballots, 83 yeses, 12 nos. It is two-thirds of majority. Motion carries. So at this time, if there's no other business... Mr. Canacchioli, please, control yourself. You'd never allow that in your classroom. All right, then. So, and Fred Warren wouldn't be happy with you, so. In turn, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe ride home tonight. All those in favor? Oh, all those people that said we wouldn't be out of here by eight, you are required to stay, because I know who voted.